Those of you who want to record, those of you who want to record, you can record this session. So, work energy theorem suggests us that work done by all the forces, work done by all the forces is equal to change in kinetic energy. This is the work energy theorem, which is final kinetic energy minus initial kinetic energy. Now, this work done by all the forces comprises of work done by conservative forces plus work done by non-conservative forces. And so, we are segregating three forces, right? Three different types of forces: conservative, non-conservative, and the last one is others. हम इसको यहां पर और कोई कैटेगरी में नहीं डालते, ठीक है? To work done by conservative, non-conservative, and others. So, this is the work energy theorem. Very simple to apply, very simple to use, and very simple to identify as, right? So, I'll give you one example. Suppose, suppose, this is a block. थोड़ा बड़ा सा वार्ड। So, this is a... This is a track. And this block is... The block starts slipping from this point. Now, this is track one. This is track two. This is track one, this is track two. Let's say from A to B. This track one, from B to C is track two. So, there is no friction between it, between the track and the block from, in track one. Track one and block, there is no friction. Track two and block, of course, there is friction. This is some mu, right? Mass of the block is m. And the height from which it falls is h. This height is h. ठीक है? You have to tell after travelling how much distance on the flat surface, the block stops. After travelling how much distance, the block stops. So, this is what we have to find. Now, करना क्या है यहां पर? बहुत simple है क्या करना? इसको दो पार्ट में break करेंगे। Work done by the forces on track one. ये एक हो गया? ठीक है? दूसरा क्या है? Work done by the forces on track two. So, track one पहले देख लेते हैं। So, first of all, what you need to do is, you need to draw the free body diagram. Identify the forces. So, mg here. Normal reaction यहां लगेगा। There is no friction here, nothing. These are the two forces. These are the only two forces acting on this block. So, this is normal reaction N one. This is weight mg. I hope I am clear till this point. Yes or no, all of you?
Yes, sir.
दीव, संचिता, शांभवी, श्रीवाच, श्रीनिधि?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Very good. So, work done by mg is how much? It's a constant force. The displacement is along the direction of force. So, Shriwats, tell me what is the work done by mg in track one?
Sir, mgh.
Mgh, very good. Because both the force and the displacement are along the same direction. शांभवी, आपको समझ आया, बेटा?
Yes, sir.
ठीक है? Then comes the next part. Work done by normal reaction. शांभवी, बताओ, what is work done by normal reaction from A to B? पंचिता?
Yes, sir.
बताइए, work done by normal reaction while taking this block from point A to B, N one?
Sir, no idea.
अरे, ऐसे कैसे no idea? श्रीनिधि? श्रीनिधि, work done, N one? कुछ नहीं पड़े, तुम लोग एक महीना, एक हफ्ता क्या? अरे, what is work done? N one is a constant force, right? All of you, yes or no? So, work done by constant forces F dot S. This is the displacement. What is angle between displacement and force?
90 degrees.
So, what is work done? Zero?
Zero.
अरे, ये कोई, इसके लिए कोई rocket sign है क्या? चलो, anyways. So, now, now, the second part.
Sir, I'm repeating, क्या, आपकी आवाज़ कट रही थी?
मेरी आवाज़ कट रही है? सबके लिए कट रही है क्या, मेरी आवाज़?
No, यहां पे network down है, मेरा.
अच्छा, तुम्हारा network down, चलो, कोई बात। बेटा, work done, normal reaction का पूछा मैंने। To normal reaction में, A to B, देखो, displacement हुआ कि नहीं हुआ, block का?
Yes, sir.
To displacement or work done, sorry, force. Force N one है, and displacement AB है। क्या angle है, बेटा, दोनों के बीच में?
90 degrees.
90 degrees. To constant force का work done, क्या निकालते हैं, शांभवी, हम लोग?
अच्छा, ठीक है, sir, then zero हो जाएगा, no?
Very good, शांभवी। Now comes the second part. Work done by the forces on track two. ठीक है? यहां क्या होगा, भाई, देखो? mg downwards, normal reaction upwards. So, this is N two. This is mg. The friction will act in the backward direction from C to B. This is the direction of friction. And this will be Fk. Fk is approximated as Fs max only. And it is given to us as mu times N, which is mu times N two, which is mu mg. Yes or no, all of you? Hello?
Yes, sir.
है ना? So, now, what is work done by mg? श्रीनिधि, what is work done by mg in this case?
Zero.
Zero? चोपड़ा जी, work done by N two?
Sir, zero.
Very good. शांभवी, work done by friction? शांभवी? Hello? Am I audible, शांभवी? बेटा, आवाज़ आ रही, मेरी कि नहीं आ रही? Hello? दीव? What is work done by friction?
Minus mu mgx.
Very good. It's minus mu mgx. Why minus mu mgx? दीव, बताओ सबको?
Because direction, or direction of displacement and forces 180 degrees. So, cos 180 degrees is negative.
Very good. Direction between force and displacement is 180. The friction is acting backwards. The displacement is happening from B to C. So, this angle between B to C is 180. So, work done by constant forces Fs cos 180 degrees. Right? So, this is the work done. So, now calculate the net work done. What is the work done by all the forces? Net work done. It's Mgh minus mu mgx. Yes or no, all of you?
Yes, sir.
Now, now, the second part. This is work done by net forces or work done by all the forces? As a conclusion. Mgh minus mu mgx. Now, what is initial velocity? Zero of the block. Yes or no?
None.
What is final velocity? Zero. So, what is final kinetic energy? Zero. What is initial kinetic energy? Zero. So, change is zero. So, from here, using work energy theorem, we get Mgh minus mu mgx is equal to zero. This is equal to, x is equal to h by mu. I hope all of you understood this. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
जो लोग देर से आए थे, उनको समझ में आया है कि नहीं आया? जो लोग देर से आए थे, उनको समझ में आया है कि नहीं? लिखिए, all of you noted? Once you are done writing it, type done. Okay, all of you? If you are done writing it, please type done. Don't waste time, huh? Noted, all of you? Hello? अरे, बोलो, मेरी। हाँ, हाँ। मैं तुमसे ज्यादा थका हुआ हूं। चलो, so this was work energy theorem. Let's try to use it in one more example. And that is vertical circular motion. Okay? We will use this work energy theorem only. This can be used in any, any question of work energy, right? So, this is a vertical circle. And on this path only a pendulum will rotate. All of you can draw the diagrams with me when I am drawing, right? But once I start explaining, please stop. So, this is a bob of mass m tied to one end of the string. And the other end of the string is fixed at this point O. Now, this bob can go, the length of the string is L. The bob can go in a circle like this, right? We have to find with what velocity the bob should be pushed? Or what is the minimum velocity given to the bob for which it will complete the circular path? ठीक है? This is the question. Find the minimum velocity given to the bob for which it completes the circular path. Now, always remember how to solve or how to approach these type of problems. ठीक है? How to approach? So, the first thing which should come to your mind is which are the important points while solving this problem? कौन-कौन से पॉइंट्स सबसे ज्यादा important? तो देखो, एक तो सबसे important point है, bottom वाला तो है ही है। Topmost point भी सबसे ज्यादा important है। हाँ या ना? सब लोग बोलेंगे, भाई, हाँ या ना?
Yes, sir.
The topmost point is very important. Because as soon as the bob crosses that point, it will continue moving in the circular path. So, we have to make this bob reach this point. Now, the question arises. So, it started from point A and it came till point B. Now, let's say the velocity is B. My question to you is, what should be the value of this B? Shall it be equal to zero or non-zero for the bob to complete the circular path? Can it be zero if the bob has to cross, to move in circular path? Can this velocity be zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Shriwats, since you have answered. So, I have one question for you. Shriwats, imagine you are the person who is in place of this bob, okay? You are tied to a rope and you are thrown here. Okay? Now, once you reach at the top, the velocity becomes zero. What will happen to you, Mr. Shriwats?
First, sir, the tension will finish.
Will it, will you continue to, will you continue to move in the circular path or you will fall down?
Sir, continue to fall in the circular path.
वो V के आगे, V zero है, कैसे होगा? How will you go ahead?
Sir, tension will complete the rotation, sir.
Tension? अरे! Okay. You said that there is a non-zero tension, okay? So, this is tension T. This is weight mg. There are two centripetal forces, yes or no, Mr. Shriwats?
Yes, sir.
These are centripetal forces. Right? So, they should be equal to mv square by r.
Yes, sir.
Now, even if, if v becomes zero, can v be zero at the topmost point? Tell me? Can the value of T plus mg be zero? Shriwats? You said v is equal to zero. It's not possible. If v becomes zero, you will directly fall from B to A. You will not go forward. There is no forward direction velocity. Understood, Shriwats? Everybody, understood or not? शांभवी, संचिता, दीव लिखार, सिद्धार, सिद्धार? अच्छा, सिद्धार आया है? सिद्धार कब join किया तुम दे?
Sir, थोड़ा late हो गया।
क्यों?
Sir, message देखा नहीं था।
अच्छा, ठीक है? I hope all of you understood this, right? So, I am just removing this part. So, the velocity at the topmost point should be equal to zero. Not equal to zero. So, this velocity is not equal to zero. Now, always remember, these are the two most important points. A and B are the most important points while solving problems in vertical circular motion. All of you pay attention. Now, what, what are the forces which are acting on this? What are the forces which are acting on this? So, weight mg downwards and tension T along the string away from the bob. Yes or no? So, even if the bob is here, there will be tension towards the centre. If the bob is here, there will be tension towards the centre. I hope all of you understood this. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, this is weight mg downwards, tension in this direction. This is tension in this direction. Now, tell me which one of these two forces, mg and tension, which one of these forces is a constant one? Tension की जो value है यहां पर, T naught से शालू करते हैं, T naught, T one, T two, or topmost point पे, let's write T three. Is tension constant here? All of you, tell me this. Is tension constant? दीव?
Yes, sir.
Tension constant है क्या यहां?
Yes, sir.
Yes, very good. संचिता, tension constant है कि variable है?
Sir, variable होना चाहिए।
अच्छा, क्यों होना चाहिए, संचिता जी, variable? बताएं आप? Prove it, it is variable.
जो कि, ये पहले तो centripetal force के साथ में है।
Centripetal force, बुका एक complete part बने गए हैं।
हाँ, हाँ। And it depends upon velocity. तो, अलग-अलग point पे, अलग-अलग velocities होंगी।
Very good. देखो, भाई, इसने बिल्कुल सही answer किया है। यहां पे, let's say, velocity is v one. यहां पे, let's say, velocity is v two. यहां पे, velocity is v. Right? Now, all of you can see here that this is some angle, theta one, ले लो इसको, or this angle को theta two ले लो। ठीक है? तो, अगर तुम ध्यान से देखोगे, at point one, check करो, all of you. T one minus mg cos theta. क्योंकि यहां पे mg का एक component इधर आएगा, mg cos theta. Yes or? Theta one is equal to mv one square by L. हाँ या ना, all of you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, this is T one, right? Now, you know that theta one is variable because theta will keep on changing. Velocity v one is variable because velocity will keep on changing. So, T one is variable. Since theta one and v one are varying, therefore, T one is variable. Right? So, this implies tension is a variable force. I hope all of you understood this. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
संचिता, श्रीनिधि, दीव?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, what will be work done? So, we have to find work done by tension T. Work done and tension. Sorry, work done by T and mg between A and B. So, ये तो prove हो गया, T one variable है। Now, next step is between A and B, find the work done. Find the net work done. तो, tension, variable force है, तो tension का work done क्या होगा? How will we see that? So, for a small displacement of this bar, from this point to this point, let's say, this is a very small displacement, right? Tension is in this direction. Displacement is along the tangent. What is angle between them? Hello?
90 degrees, sir.
90 degrees. So, work done by tension is equal to zero. Yes or no? अरे, भाई, हाँ या ना बोलना है? किसको समझ नहीं आ रहा है, तो बोलो, उसने नहीं समझ में आया? सिद्धार, समझ आया तुमको कि नहीं आया?
Yes, sir, आ गया।
श्रीनिधि, दीव?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
शाबाश! So, find, so this is Wt, ये zero. What about work done by mg? Shriwats, tell us about work done by mg now? From A to B.
From A to B. Work done will be...
It's a constant force. So, mg is acting downwards. Displacement is along this direction.
So, it will be minus mgh.
Minus mg into 12. I know all of you understood this. Hello? Any doubts till this point?
No, sir.
बहुत बढ़ गया। इसको T three की जगह T लिख लो बस। इतना note करो ना, बेटा। इतने को note करो, जल्दी से। Please write it quickly, huh? And once you are done, type done in the comment box. So I hope all of you have noted it, right? Now comes key, we know the work done, right? Between A to B. So I am just removing this part because we don't need it anymore. You know that tension is a variable force here. Now work done is how much? Network done between A to B is minus twelve mg. This is equal to change in kinetic energy. Yahan pe likhe log to. By applying work energy theorem, we get W net, which is equal to minus twelve mg is equal to half mv square minus half m u square. Here velocity is u, here velocity is v. This is equation number one. I hope all of you understood this. Yes or no? Kids say yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Now comes the next part. At B, use the concept of circular motion. That is net force towards the center. At B, net force towards the center is centripetal force. So so weight mg and tension T both are directed towards the center. Yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Are the centripetal force and this is equal to mv square by L. This is equation two. Now look at this equation. And this equate. Yahan pe u square is equal to v square plus four gl. Hoga? From first equation, we get u square is equal to v square plus four gl. Yes or no, all of you?
Yes sir.
Now look at this second equation. Yahan pe u is minimum, all of you please pay attention, ha? Please be very alert. U is minimum when v is minimum. Yes or no? Hello? Because gl is a constant, right? So u is minimum when v is minimum. And here, from second equation, v is minimum when T is minimum. Yes or no, all of you? Dev? Samajh aaya bita?
Yes sir.
Siddharth? Samajh aaya?
Yes sir.
Shrinidhi, Shriwats?
Yes sir.
Thik hai? To what will be the minimum value of T, Shriwats? Tell me what is the minimum value of T which can be, which is possible in any string? Hmm? T ki minimum value jo possible hai kisi bhi string me, bataiye kya hoti hai?
The zero.
Siddharth? Siddharth? Awaaz aari bita?
Yes sir.
To bataiye T ki minimum value kya ho sakti hai string me? Tumne laws of motion padha hai ki nahi padha hai?
Yes sir.
Ha, to to bata sakhte ho, to batao. Tension ki minimum value, ah, zero ho sakti hai, bilkul. So, very good both of you. So T is equal to zero, T minimum is equal to zero. So since T minimum is equal to zero, since T minimum is equal to zero in any string. In any string. Therefore, mg is equal to mv square by L. Or from here we get v square is equal to gl. Got it? This was one A. Two and three. Yahan tak sabko samajh me aaya, bita nahi aaya, sabko ha na bolenge bhai sabhi.
Yes sir.
So, using one and three, so one is u square is equal to v square plus four gl. And three is v square is equal to gl. So using one and three, we get u square is equal to five gl. Or u is equal to root of five gl. That's it. So minimum value of u required by an object to complete the circular part is root five gl. I hope all of you understood this. Yes or no? Please, either it can be a yes or a no. So just go through it once, yahan se leke yahan tak ek bar aao, pura karo, dekho isko. And aakli me you have to substitute the values. Just check if you understood it or not and if you have understood, please write. And if you have any doubts, you can surely ask. All of you noted it? Hello?
Yes sir.
Yes sir. Likho isko. Ha bhai? Done? Sambhavi ji, likh rahe hai ki nahi aap? Ho gaya? Chaliye. To I hope, ke tum log ha na bola karo, ek to tum log camera ban karke bait raha ho, sab log, thik hai? Ek baat batao, aise hi main bhi padhane laga to tum log ko achha lage ha kya? Maja aayega tumko pande me aise, aakashwani. Radio me padho tum log aise hi. Chalo aise hi padho tum, khush roho. Tum bhi camera mat on karo, main bhi nahi on kar. To kya kya hua yahan tak? Complete the circular path, right? So this is vertical circular motion. So there is another case for all of you. Try doing this. Isko aap log solve karenge, thik hai? Use the same concept. So this is a circular track. It's a track, right? Track ka matlab kya hota hai? Ki jahan par object under chalega, vertical circular track. Thik hai? Aur bottommost point pe ye hai bottommost. Thik hai? The radius of the track is R. Ye given hai. Weight of the bob block is m. Question is, what should be the minimum velocity given to this block? So that it completes the circular path. There is no friction. There is no friction between the track and the block. Likhie. Solve kariye isko. Ye dekhe. Similar to this. Thik hai, solve kariye. Did you solve it, baby?
Sir, is it root five G R?
It is root five G R, but you are able to solve it or not?
Yes, sir.
Shambhavi? What is it, baby? Shambhavi? None of you heard, Dev Lekhar, you also got injured in childhood?
Sure, it's been cured, root five G R.
Hmm. Chupada ji, where are you? All of you?
I'm doing it now.
You're doing it? Do something, you guys, come back tomorrow. Tomorrow, not today, your class is tomorrow. So we will meet on Friday. Please complete it. And join. And you can do. All the questions of E C Verma from work energy and power. All the questions. Try doing all this, try doing most of them, right? Specifically from, I'll just let you. Tell you about it. Ah, I'm mentioning the question numbers, one which you should have to do before joining the next session. You see all of you. I didn't teach you spring, right? I haven't taught you spring, right?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Leaving the spring questions, don't do spring questions. Do these questions. Ah. You all, fifty-six, fifty-seven. Write it. Fifty-six, fifty-seven. Fifty-eight. Fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one. Try all the questions, starting from fifty-six. To sixty-four. Fifty-six to sixty-four. You guys can do it. Okay? These are vertical circular motion questions. Sanchita ji? Do it, see if it happens or not? Next, next class, we will do some more questions and spring forces, okay?
Yeah.
But please, try it, baby, fifty, how many did I give, fifty-one?
Fifty-six to sixty-four.
Yeah, it's supposed to happen, you guys, eight, ten questions, you won't solve it, you'll miss it in two days, okay?
Yeah.
Do it. Dev? Srivats, Siddharth, Shrinidhi, Shambhavi? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.